Mondays are light and Fridays are always light. So we probably will not fill those days, but people will have those options. With the waitlist, the people that I'll be getting to, I'm not sure they'll all take it because they may not all get what they're looking for, but I will have some options for them.
Yeah, Mike, great job. And I wanted to tell you, I asked my family to only use on Monday and Friday for our son so that it wouldn't keep anybody else from getting in.
Yeah, that's great. And there's actually been a lot of people that I've I've talked to, and I think some of the people on the waitlist have even said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna save it for, we'll, we'll let someone else who really needs it, use it. So I think that just speaks to the community that we have here that if they didn't really need it, they weren't going to take it from someone who may need it.
So that's great. Do you have a sense, Mike? Among the 25 families that were on the waitlist, but said they they would not take a spot. Do you think that? I mean, I assume at this point in the year, they've come up with some other solution and probably weren't looking to change it. What do you think that might say about the demand come next September? And you think those, I guess my question is, do you think the people that said, no, I won't take a slot are are people that are likely to be back in September and say, if there's a slot for me, do you want it?
I would imagine that it's probably split and maybe even more so that come September, they're going to look to want to be in Panther Club. I think just the convenience of it being in the school, the affordability. I think it, they will try to get in. So I think we will have a demand again. But I don't know what the incoming kindergarten class will be if it, you know, this year kindergarten was huge. We have you know, 40 kindergartners, two whole groups. We, we haven't had that before. So if the incoming kindergarten group is a little smaller, that it could open up spots for the demand that we may have from the people that were opted out or waitlisted.
It's interesting because I don't think the incoming enrollment in kindergarten is noticeably different than what it was last year. It's just that we
That's the one.
Wanted Panther Club to a greater degree than last year.
Yeah, I don't think there's any correlation between the size. I think it's just the people's lives and what they're, you know, working, working from home, need the childcare. I think it just, I think that'll just fluctuate. And I don't think it'll really correlate with the the size too much.
So it sort of sounded though we're, we're in a higher demand environment and likely to remain so.
I would think so.
So amid the changes in personnel and the expansion in personnel, you still feel like the program is running smoothly?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Mike, did you want to comment on some of your ideas potentially for next year?
Yeah, so we don't need any decisions, but I do want to just bring it up. You know, talking with my staff, there's two things I'd like to just bring up and maybe discuss at a later time when we start talking about fees and and the program for next year. One of them being the, the, the time going till 6:30. We're finding that most of our kids are gone and out of there by almost six o'clock. So we were, I would like to possibly reduce the time from 6:30 to six. And then staff would be on till 6:15, giving staff a 15 minute like opportunity for any follow up work and or a staff meeting. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is the middle school. We've currently dropped down to one middle schooler. I don't think it's, the program's not great for middle schoolers. They're bored. It's sending a staff member over to the middle school or school, waiting for whenever their schedule is done because it does kind of fluctuate in the afternoon. And we're wasting a staff member for one child waiting to bring them back over where I could use that staff member to cover 10 children at the school. So I would like to just bring it up about potentially eliminating the middle school from Panther Club.
So in previous years, we've had, as I recall, more like three or four kids?
I think at the most, at the highest, we probably had eight. I would say the last two years, and I can go back and double check those numbers. It's been about five. And this year we are down to one and they're only three days a week.
So I mean, I think both of those ideas make some sense, but both of those ideas would obviously not be well received by whatever percentage of the community needs that extra half hour to 6:30 or has a middle school kid they want to participate. I'm not arguing that it's the wrong decision to make, but it just need to understand who gets harmed and the degree to which that would be a problem, right?
Yeah, no, I agree. I just wanted to bring it up now, put it, put it out there and, and you know, have some future discussion as we get closer to outlining next year.
It would be helpful to know, is there a way to coordinate with the middle school to talk to them about now coming fully out of the pandemic, whether they have plans to have more after school activities than just science, Olympia plays and sports?
It's funny you bring that up. So Mindy has been in contact with a teacher over there who is also a resident about trying to offer more after school clubs and having us offer them. We're going to sit down with her at some point this meeting and just have a discussion about that and how that looks. I mean, we did it years and years ago. I think it was probably 10 years ago, right before I came on board here and they did away with it because they didn't have the enrollment. So that, you know, that kind of speaks. So one aspect, will, will we get middle schoolers to sign up if we were to dive into this? But so we're going to have a discussion with her, kind of see what they're looking for and maybe what we can do.
Yeah, I think that's great because like I frankly agree with you about Panther Club and the middle school. It feels like the wrong solution. But I was sort of shocked. You know, I went to middle school like 100 years ago and there were many things to do after middle school. And I think it seems very focused on athletics and just a couple of other options at our school right now. So if we can help in the solution, it would be great. But I'm sure there's a demand.
Right. So, so we'll look into that. I mean, one of my concerns right away is I don't necessarily have you know, a staff member that would be overseeing it. So we'd be relying potentially on a part timer to kind of be our like supervisor. But you know, we're a little ways from that and we can figure out some, some ideas as how that could work.
All right. And then, Mike, while we have you, did you want to just give a quick update on playgrounds?
Yes. So I've been in contact with four different companies about playground designs and costs. They have gotten back to me with designs for each of our parks. I'm going to present the designs to P R A B at the end of the month at our meeting to kind of get their feedback on the designs. Which designs they might like? Do they think there's enough equipment? And get, get some feedback and you know, hopefully they kind of can help me lead lead me into like which company we'd like to use. And then after that, I'd like to come back to the village board and present to you the comments that P R A B has and maybe a recommendation on what company we'd like to try to move forward with.
Do you think there's a way that Prab could get some community input? I'm thinking, for example, of the way that the pool committee handled getting feedback from the community, which felt like it was so helpful. You know, in terms of coming up with a design that everybody was really happy with. And my recollection, when we've dealt with playground issues in the past is that you know, it's, it's really easy to propose something that then a lot of parents of young children are not actually that pleased with. And I don't know how many parents of young children are on Prab right now, but it just seems like it would be good at some stage in the process, before we commit to something to have input from a larger group.
Yeah, I can talk to them about that and see if they have any suggestions on how to maybe go about putting that to the public. I'm a little hesitant to go too far into the public because I just, I don't want it to delay. You know, because you know, playground design, there's a million different options. I don't want to get stuck in fighting over this or that. I want to
Yeah. Well, would it, would it be possible maybe to do a survey, survey if there was say three options? I mean, I'm just making that up obviously, but if we had a limited number of options, would it make sense to have a survey, do you think?
Yeah, I think that, that, that could be, be something. For sure.
I think part of what Nicole might be responding to, Mike, is if you'll recall under your predecessor, there were some designs put out there that didn't generate a huge amount of excitement from the community. And sort of we ended up putting them out and then having to sort of draw them back when people were like, that's worse than what we have now.
Yeah, no. I agree. And you know, for me, and I think I've said it to Eric multiple times is the one thing I don't want to do is is put something out that's not as nice or doesn't feel like it was as much of equipment. So I've made it very clear to all these companies, you know, here's kind of the budget we're looking at right now. I, I want to make sure I have more active play areas than I did before. But, but certainly we can figure something out where we're not getting overwhelmed by the public input, but having them give us some feedback at some point. I think we can make that work.
I think the other piece of that is when we, you know, these companies have a sort of a template they use, obviously, when they present their equipment, but that's a starting point. Then each one of those proposals may sort of trigger some thinking on the part of everybody who's involved about, hey, that was a good thing that maybe isn't as valuable, et cetera.
Yeah, that was my hope is like that P R A B would kind of help me lead, lead us towards maybe a company we all kind of like. And then as far as the design they've gone forward, we can change it a million different ways. But if we like the overall equipment that they offer and the look of it, I was hoping to start to narrow that down.
Yeah. And I mean, I assume that each of the playgrounds would have a little bit of a separate character so that they're not all the same stuff, right?
Absolutely.
Obviously, some of them are neighborhood resource and people tend to go to the one that's close, but some of them are places that, you know, parents drive their kids to because they like the stuff that's there, right?
Yep.
So that's nice. So, all right, all sounds good. An opportunity to shout out again to our now former assemblyman Tom Emanati, who provided a substantial grant to us on possible playground renovations. All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, we're running slightly late, but not too bad. Anthony Carr, I see you. I will unmute you or unmute yourself. There you are.
Hi, Mayor. I'm on board. I'm unmuted. Happy New Year to everyone.
And likewise here. And in this quasi-public setting, a shout out to you for that great work with Con Ed and the reimbursement for the charging stations and all that, as well as for having hit the ground running as our new superintendent of village.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words. So Mayor and Board, I'll, I'll keep it brief. Why, why does a municipality choose to embark on a, on a water system audit and a rate study and what are they? So think of the water system audit as a your yearly exam with the doctor, you know, goes over a physical, checks you out at a higher level, right? And if anything is wrong or requires more evaluation, then you go see a specialist. So that's kind of how the, the rate study and the, and the audit are linked. So the audit being the first piece, being the physical at a higher level, and then the rate study being more of, okay, do I see a specialist? Do I see an orthopedist? Do I see an oncologist? You know, depending on what the issue is. Sometimes there's no issue. And that's what the, the more detailed information provides. So a water system audit basically takes a look at a high level at the finances of a water system. I was involved in a water system audit in the city of White Plains along with storage tank replacement projects. So everything similar that we're going to be embarking on in the next few years. I've done it at larger scales and at the same scale and have been on the opposite side as a consultant. Water rate studies, audits, excuse me, are good, right? So I, I don't recall, and I believe during Eric's tenure, he, there was, there has not been a water system audit performed yet or a rate study. And I even looked through the prior superintendent's records. I haven't seen that. And, and Mayor and Board, you may or may not be aware of, of an audit or a rate study. But to my knowledge, it has not been one performed in quite, quite a long time. I don't want to date it because I don't know what the number of, if it's been performed. But moving on, the, the water system audit, you know, is a high level look at, at the systems finances, basically looks at expenses. Okay. And what are those expenses? Operations and maintenance, right? Capitalized expenses, but, but more so on the, on the consumption side, meaning what are we using and how much are we paying for it? And how much are we staying within the confines of what's called allowable consumption, which is from the New York City Water Board? And what that basically is, is based on 2020 census, we have 7,513 people that, that living in the village. Not that we serve water to, that number is about 9,500, but 7,513 is the number of heads that we have the, in theory, based on the 2020 census, right? What that, what that tells, that number is important because what the New York City Water Board said is, okay, based on each person, you're allowed up to 112.71 gallons per day. Let's call it 113 gallons per day. Times X amount of days in a month, right? Sometimes 28, mostly 30, sometimes 31. And that water consumption, that allowable equals for us about 26.4 million gallons over the course of a month. Anything over that, you're paying what's called an excess fee. That's in the, in the range of about $3,500 per 1 million gallons over. So if you go 600, 6 million gallons over that 24.6 or 26.4, excuse me, then you're paying that number, you know, six, let's say 4 million gallons times 3,000 change, probably upwards of a $15,000 bill. So that, that's the difference between what allowable and excess. And you can imagine during summer months, especially in periods of extreme drought, like in August, we were well within that excess category by, by tens of thousands of dollars. But so was every other municipality. And we know that because we've conferred with Newcastle, I've conferred my counterparts in White Plains, that was across the board. I know obviously every municipality has different irrigation legislation and different water usage, but that varies based on population, a lot of different things. But all in all, what the audit's going to tell us, okay, how, how much are we using? How much are we paying for it? How much are we charging our customers? You know, right now we have only residential rate. We don't have a commercial rate. The, the rate study will get into further detail and look at, okay, what's your current rate? Okay. And, and set up different models of if you were to introduce a new rate, like many municipalities have a commercial rate. So commercial users generally use more water and therefore generate higher revenue. That's a legislative decision. If, if you want to introduce a commercial rate, you may not want to, you may want to maybe blend the residential rates that there's tiers, you know, between zero and X, you know, a tiered residential. So between zero and X, there's this cost per, per gallon or cubic foot between X and Y, you know, there's all different ways you can do it. There's not a right way or a wrong way. It's just the way that works best for the village and how your board in consultation with the administrator want to proceed on that. And again, that's a legislative decision. But what the rate study is going to do is take the information from the audit and say, okay, here's our expenses, here's our revenues. Are we in the black? Are we, are we, do we have surpluses? Which I know our finances are managed pretty well. We're definitely not in the red. We would know that if, from the water fund, but the question is, are we where we need to be and, and you know, could we be making more money to supplement and subsidize more capital projects? Are we perfect? Are we, do we have too much of an excess or a surplus in the fund balance in the water fund, excuse me? So what that's going to do, that rate study is going to take the information from the audit, use part of that and then expand upon it in the sense that they're going to look at what, how much we use in more detail for the water, how many commercial users we have, how many residential, what's the ratio? Any future or existing capital projects? Do we have debt service on these projects? And then they're going to say, okay, we're going to develop a major model, a rate, a rate model. It's really a high powered Excel spreadsheet. I've done it in Norwalk and I've done it in White Plains where we basically adjust a few of the variables, but the spreadsheet takes about 20 to 30 or more variables of all different proportions, debt ratio, debt services, existing capital projects, future capital projects, what we feel is an acceptable reserve. In Norwalk, on the sewage treatment plant side, we, we figured, okay, in a yearly, our yearly operations and maintenance, we, we said that three months of, of three, a quarter of that amount was a good surplus. With, you know, in case something happens, in case there's, there's catastrophic failures. Obviously there's other fund balances and fund sources for that, but you know, and there's no right number. There's industry standards that range anywhere from 10% to 30% of the annual expenses, but it basically takes what we want to have as a surplus for rainy day money, contingency, et cetera, et cetera. Paying our operations and maintenance expenses and then also funding capital projects, right? So think of it as a pie in those three slices, your O and M that you have to pay, right? You have to keep the plants. You have to keep the water distribution system running, right? And, and the tanks and the booster systems and the pumps and the coordination, that has to be, that has to run. That's, that's salaries, et cetera, et cetera, right? Then you have the, the surplus. Well, how much do we want after we pay everybody and everything? And we set aside money for our capital, how much do we want to be left with as a, as a safety cushion? Then there's the third piece. Okay. How much does the one that they would want to allocate yearly? Because we should be doing that for, especially for the water system, you know, do you want to put 300,000 to 500,000 dollars into the system every year, which really Mayor and Board doesn't really buy you much in the water world, maybe buys you a street or two of water main improvements. It doesn't, it doesn't do a lot, but you have to start somewhere. You would start at your, your, your worst areas, right? The, the areas, the hot spots, the oldest areas that have high break history, old material, which will be identified. And you may or may not have read it in the RFP. Our just abuse and system, we will be placing an RFP out in the future for storage tanks, design and construction, and also a master system plan a master plan or a capital improvement program that looks 20 years at your water main system. And it's all based on the model, all the input that we get. And again, this is kind of tangential and on the side, but with that capital program plan, what to replace, when to replace it, where to replace it. But we're only going to be able to do so much at a time, right? And that's so much is going to, what's going to come out of that rate study. So after we pay ourselves and after we put away what we need for contingency, how much do we want to put towards capital every year? Again, that's a legislative decision, not for me. But that's only, you know, I could only give the recommendations professionally, but so audit's the first step. High level kind of gives a general litmus test of how the finances are, is what's coming out equaling or more than what's going in. Right? Kind of the current state of, of the economy or our water economy, if you will. They take that information, they being the consultant, they take that information, put it into a watering model. And they study based on our prior usage, based on our anticipated usage, i.e. future development, trends in the water system, trends in the water industry, our, when I say trends in the water system, our, our water system, meaning has there been a lot more breaks than normal? Are we using a lot more water than, than usual? So they'll look at all that information, which will be provided from the staff, finance department, myself, administrator's office, and they put it together in a model. And then from each of those tasks, both for the audit and for the rate study, they will generate them random and they will present to your board and go through all the findings and recommendations and answer any questions that we have or anything that we might want to change or see differently.
So that, that seems very much right minded, especially with the looming big capital expense of the tanks.
Correct.
If you're a betting man, do you have a sense for what the project of this kind will cost?
I would say, based on my prior lives as a consultant, an RFP this magnitude for the rate study, excuse me, for the audit and the rate study, you could separate the two if you wanted to. You can do the audit without the rate study, but you need to do the audit to do the rate study. So the second one is contingent upon the first, but the first is a contingent on the second. I would say you're in the 30 to 50,000 dollar range. Again, a smaller company with less overhead and maybe wanting to do work to the village for the first time could probably sustain a lower consultancy, closer to that.
So you would, I assume you have a universe of potential consultants to send this to?
Yes, Mayor.
And then just to, if I could add to this. So our water fund has been very healthy over the past several years. I think we're carrying a fund balance that's close to 50%. But we're up against a lot of challenges now. The cost of running the middle water treatment plant is going up considerably every year. It costs more to acquire the water from New York City and it costs more to treat the water. So we're, we're up against that. We're up against more people working from home. So there's a lot more usage historically. We just went through one of the worst droughts in a long time that really increased consumption. But it also increased revenue. So you know, we're trying to understand where all the dust will settle. And then layer on top of that, we've got a major capital project coming up with the replacement of the two tanks. So we want to make sure our fee structure is keeping peace with the increased expenditures we're going to have to lay out in years to come.
Right. I mean, and again, you, you, Mayor and Board, you may not want to introduce a commercial rate and, and just maybe tweak the residential rate. I could tell you if based on the consumption that I see, it's a smaller population, but still we use a decent amount of water. You may want to consider the commercial rate and even a, or a blended residential rate. Again, the consultant's going to spell out all these scenarios and you're going to see X, Y, and Z and what, and what the revenue generates from there. So it, it's hard to speculate now because that's what we would be doing, but the the, 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 the good part is that there will be a surplus. And, and I do recommend that every year, you know, you do put a few hundred thousand dollars into the water supply system, whether it's replacing hydrants, valves, and start improving those water mains because it's very costly to, to have to fix the water mains. I mean, you know, two weeks in, we replaced a water valve on Wheel Avenue, the bubbler valve. That emergency work was $17,000. That was one valve and about 10 feet of new six inch ductile iron water. Now it was very good repair and that $17,000 was all in. That's digging down, backfilling, putting the new material in there and then putting the asphalt and walking away. That was super nuts. And again, it was emergency work too. So the price might've been a little bit more escalated due to the night work being involved. So traditionally it probably wouldn't cost as much, but just to give you an order of magnitude, to do one valve, you're at least in the 10 to 12,000 dollar range on a normal blue sky operation and planned as part of the capital project. So you know, $300,000, $500,000 gets you maybe two, two village blocks. And I'm assuming a block is about 500 feet. So two, two village blocks, all the restoration of the roadway. And then maybe a few valves, maybe a hydrant to be replaced. So it's, you know, it, it it's costly unfortunately. And you know, the escalation with COVID and just contractor bidding now is, is a lot more aggressive than it's ever been. So, but yes, it's very healthy. Highly recommend the audit. And to give you an idea on the storage tanks too. Again, we have done that in White Plains and a few years ago, the estimate was 90 cents. So roughly 90 cents a gallon based on the size of your storage tank. So we have, right now we have two 1 million gallon storage tanks. Assume two, one million go back. You're definitely going to have two tanks for redundancy. But maybe it's, you know, one is a little bit too big and it's optimized to 0.75. Let's just assume one. Right? So 90 cents was back in 2017. That's probably upwards of about $1.25 now, $1.50. So but if you take the two million gallon tanks, right, at a dollar a gallon, that's $2 million, just, just for the tanks. Then you have all the site work associated with it, meaning all the new piping that need to install to put in there, right? Tanks might move a little bit. Those pipes are older. You would do everything on that water treatment site, on that water storage tank site, all at the same time. So I mean, a project of that magnitude is going to run four to $6 million. I mean, that's just, you know, could it be higher? Absolutely. Four, I think is on the lower end with an aggressive contractor who, who, who again, maybe needs the work a little bit more. But the tanks, I would say is about $1.25 per gallon. And again, this is something that's going to, we're going to have real numbers in the future when we put out that RFP for the water storage tank design and for that master, master plan or that capital improvement program that's going to show 20 years of water main replacement that we need to do, which will be our roadmap and our bible moving forward. So it won't be subjective, won't be arbitrary. There'll be a basis as to why we're repairing roads and water mains where we are. But the storage tank design and the hydraulic model slash master plan, that feed probably from the consultant is, is going to be between 300 to $500,000. I mean, that's, again, that's design from soup to nuts. That's feasibility study. That's Department of Health permitting for the water storage tanks. That's comments back and forth. But again, that's for the master plan, which, which the deliverable at the end of the day will be a nice report for us and a model of our water system that shows all the pressures and flows at hydrants. That model shows all the pipes linked to the storage tanks. So when the consultant is doing the storage tank design, they'll know how much they can change the geometry of our tanks without impacting the system because you don't want to make the tanks too much higher than they are now. Because every time you go up, if every 2.3 feet that you go up vertically, you're putting an extra PSI in the system. So if you go up 10 feet, well, then you're putting about another six, seven PSI in the system. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but for the old cast iron pipes and for the pipes that are equalized and, and, and just, just used to what they're used to, that could be a big change. So you probably would go wider. that could be a big change, so you probably would go wider and deeper before you go higher. But again, the consultant doing the tanks, it's important that that RFP goes out together because they're gonna have the model and the tanks and the pipes are both interconnected hydraulically. So again, that's in the future, but I just wanted to start having the dialogue, uh, which I have with, I've had with the administrator and also for the board that three to five hundred thousand for that design, probably four to six million dollars for the water storage tanks.
All right, so that's great, thank you for that, Anthony. I think if you have questions, I think we're, sounds good. Sympathetic to uh, getting our ducks in a row about this and appreciate your pushing forward on it. I don't know that much needs to be said about the proposed update to parking regulations at Hildreth in Washington. You were provided a very clear memo, anything need to be added to that?
Mayor, not, not on my end unless you or the board have question.
We have a resolution tonight to put on a public hearing for that discussion. All right, anything else for Anthony?
I think that is it.
All right, Lieutenant, at ease.
All right, not a problem, mayor. Take care. Mayor, Eric, uh, do you want me to pop on Eric for the um, for the resolution for the sidewalk and curb?
Oh, no, no worries.
Okay, let me know if you want me to come back on, I'm, I'm available.
Thank you, Anthony.
All right, thank you, Anthony.
Mayor Board, have a nice night, happy new year again.
You're likewise for you.
Take care.
All right. Next fiscal year budget timeline and schedule. There was a timeline included in uh, the packet. And, and we just opened that here, one, one point I wanted to remind everybody of is tax grievance day, the state required tax grievance day is Tuesday, February twenty-one. And we're required to have a quorum on site from six PM to nine PM.
It's actually five to nine, um, New York State uh, requires four hours.
Okay.
Um, we'll, we'll be here, uh, court is able to reschedule, so we'll be here.
Okay. All right, so um, just mark your calendars for the twenty-first and let me know if you can't do it. Five to nine on, on the twenty-first. Uh, again, it generally is a quiet evening because most people uh, apply in writing and don't come, but we certainly do get some who come to uh, present their case, so, all right.
That, can I just mention that's in the middle of the school winter recess? I don't know if you want to.
We have no choice on the date.
The state declares it, okay, all right.
Yeah, and, and then two other dates, um, uh, March eighth and March ninth, which are Wednesday and Thursday. We have pegged um, for uh, budget work sessions. And uh, those are. What's that?
And February twenty-seventh.
Yes, most of them are falling, right, and the twenty-seventh.
On the thirteenth.
Yeah, yeah, where I, where I know um, special work session is typically on Monday meeting. Uh, and then those two, the Wednesday and Thursday with DPW includes.
Okay, so folks could mark those in their calendar and also let us know if there's any conflict here. But we, as is shown in this uh, in this schedule, uh, the tentative budget have to be filed by March twentieth.
That's right.
And then uh, uh, the budget has to be adopted by the end of April. Supposed to be happening on April twenty-fourth. And we have tonight a resolution to permit uh, us to break the tax cap, which is just pro forma, we've done it every year. Not any indication that we're intent to do it or not to do it, simply to have the paperwork in place.
That's right, yeah, we're, we're legally obligated, any missed value that has to break the tax, legally obligated that a little longer to serve our act. In terms of signing from, for the budget, has the Department of Health gotten that back to us on the pool? Yes, uh, actually late last week, they gave us thirty, thirty-six comments back. Uh, at first glance, talking to the consultant, they're rather minor nature. Um, so he'll be meeting um, one-on-one with the Department of Health in their offices to go over those. Um, so yeah, he, he feels that there were no major issues with the, the review. Now it's just resubmitting and waiting for uh, for the okay.
So do you think now you could get this out, including school?
Yeah, um, he wants to wait till he has that, that one-on-one with them, um, but he, having seen the initial comments feels comfortable. Um, you know, obviously if we are moving forward with the pool that puts the tax cap um, conversation, you know, probably in all, in all probability to break the cap uh, to take on that debt service, but it is looking like the timing is, is aligning at this point.
So obviously, frankly, but do you think, say, a month from now, we'll be through the DOH process with approval?
Uh, I, I, I hope so. You know, we, we had, we had uh, we had estimated three months for three to four months for the initial comment back and that was uh, more time needed from the village, so. Um, we can, given the degree of comments, start moving forward with the bond resolution and the bid package without final DOH if there is a level of comfortability from the engineer. Uh, he works on these projects a lot, has a lot of experience in Westchester. You know, I, I think we want to be fur- further, further enough along, but not necessarily have full approval to launch it to the next step.
Okay, so on this budget timeline, can you and Alyssa just send out outlook invites for the items that involve board engagement? And then folks can accept and we'll see who's coming? And then it'll automatically affect into people's life plan.
Sounds good.
All right. Something like a life plan, I guess, Nick. Do you think that your budget process is essentially as it's been in that year and should you tweak it in any way?
No, we've um, it's been a pretty effective budget process. Uh, you know, the interesting, the things that we're watching right now, obviously health insurance. I ship has already advised that that's gonna go up fifteen percent. Um, uh, so that, that'll be a, a budget challenge. We lost, you know, one of the carriers, uh, that was about forty thousand dollars a year. Um, uh, one of the wireless carriers on the cell power. Uh, their, their lease was up and they, they weren't gonna renew. Um, so that's forty thousand in, in revenue loss. Um, sales tax has been very healthy. We, we've got the, the four payments, the next one will come in um, February. The first one was above budget and above what we received last year, so that was welcome news. Um, mortgage tax has, is, is tracking a bit above budget, but is lower than last year. Um, parking revenues have, have been coming back. Uh, so you know, there's all these things that are happening and why the budget process is so dynamic year to year. Um, obviously we've been, the, the price of gas has been pretty dramatic.
So did you say sales tax le- less?
Yeah, has, has gone up. We've gotten one payment in so far, which has been up, above what we've received last year and last year was very good. Um, does that hold strong through, you know, the, the next few payments? That would be the question, but. Um, what you'll see from, you know, debt, the uh, the audit presentation is come COVID, we rolled back our sales tax revenue forecast and then they took off. So we were able to build our fund balance that way and we incrementally started increasing it. I think during COVID, we reduced it to eight hundred thousand and it, and it came in at, you know, one point five and then went up to a million and it was one point eight. And this year we ratcheted up to one point three, so where will it end up falling? Um, so we may be able to increase the revenue budget through that pending. Um, so we'll, we'll see. Hey, Rob.
Hello, there you are. Hey, Rob, hello.
And then obviously capital, um, we've done a good job with uh, replacing um, our vehicles, but we have another dump truck for two hundred and fifty thousand on the docket, um, existing ones over thirty years old. Uh, we've got, um, actually we just replaced a sanitation truck. We just got a check from DAS for that, so that's fully paid, and we're one sanitation truck, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It did, yeah, it's on the road and we got our check, so. Um, it's a garbage truck, sanitation truck. Um, I don't know, uh, the standard. Yes.
Yeah, I'm after an air conditioning power suit.
That's right, well, the most important thing is a stainless steel bucket, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Okay, step up, we're sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you want, I can pull up the PowerPoint and advance the slides if you want me to do that, is that easier?
That's all, we were just chatting outside, he's welcome to use my laptop to have it. At the same time, he could say, "I applied", but then what you'll be able to see it.
I want, I bring it up, I'll share the screen so it goes up to the Zoom window. You'll tell me when to win there.
Does that work?
All right, that works, and I have printouts for you.
Okay.
If that's easier.
Good to see you.
Hey, you too, my server, good.
All right, so you would just. He's definitely gonna have it up for the Zoom.
I'll have it up so it shows up on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Reduce the tech risk, right? All right.
Redundancy, Peter, that's what we go for.
All right, exactly, belts and suspenders and duct tape. All right. Seven fifty-nine, eight o'clock, we'll roll.
So um, Eric, you're gonna sneak away in here and realize that you found a million dollars. Let's hope, I mean, I get it, let's hope. I understand your back ends now, it's been uh, four years together, I thought we figured it out. Been uh, an interesting budget, well, you know, COVID just kind of set everything, but a reset on everything.
Well, that ain't over, with the complexity about whatever it means, but how, how it will look when the dust comes, for sure.
You know, we have been able to use what you, you'll hear tonight, uh, carried a strong general fund fund balance, but we're strategically drawing it down to pay cash, we're not having it tomorrow.
All right, it's eight o'clock. Michael, who's Michael?
Oh, and Nicole just asked, are those uh, budget work sessions planned for seven? Um, we could do it at seven, we could do it at, at earlier than that. Do you prefer six, seven?
I don't agree with you.
Okay.
Seven, do you pair, Nicole, seven work for you?
Um, well, the, the ninth is, is the one that's potentially tricky for me, so earlier would be better for me that day.
So make them on, um, the ninth is everybody, okay, that one is at six?
Okay, my name.
I don't maintain that. Does the police budget was up about twelve percent last year, which you've been before the next one?
You know, a lot of areas will catch you that, uh, dig into what line that was, sometimes it's in retirement payout, sometimes it's overtime, retirement is separate, right? No, that's the, I think that there's time to pay out, though, but here in the retirement line, though.
They, they, the retirement payouts are typically from the uh.
Upward in budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually, yes.
Eight oh two, everybody's been. Good evening and welcome to the village board meeting, uh, our first meeting in the month of January, our first meeting in twenty twenty-three, so uh, happy new year to all. I think we're optimistic that it will be a good year, uh, after a few years of some struggling, so. Uh, welcome to twenty twenty-three. Uh, our uh, next regular meeting is two weeks from today, which is on Monday, January twenty-three. And I just had a few announcements to make and then I will hand the meeting over to Rob Danielle uh, from PKF O'Connor Davies, our auditor, who uh, as you will know from past visits, uh, a uh, friendly face that we've seen in years past uh, and appreciate the service we get from PKF O'Connor Davies. So just a few uh, announcements I wanted to make. Uh, the first is there are a few dates that are worth pointing out to folks. Uh, one is that uh, our interfaith clergy group is putting together a Martin Luther King service uh, that will take place at eleven AM on Monday, the sixteenth at St. John's on Sunnyside Avenue. Uh, that's an interfaith uh, program uh, with many different faiths represented. Uh, so if, if, uh, I, I would certainly encourage folks to uh, put that on their calendar if they possibly can, eleven AM on Monday, the sixteen. Uh, second thing I wanted to report is that at our next meeting on the twenty-third, as some of you already know, uh, we scheduled a public hearing on our proposed uh, development moratorium in A-one central business district. And that would be a moratorium that is uh, uh, effective backdated to November, uh, which is the date when we had our town hall meeting on the subject, so. Uh, the information on that is available at pledgeable-dash-nyc.com. Uh, but uh, before acting on the moratorium, I were required to have a public hearing, uh, which is scheduled for eight PM on Monday, the twenty-third. Uh, absent some new information that we change the views of the board, I anticipate that we would also have a resolution thereafter uh, to enact that moratorium, so that's two weeks from today. And then uh, the last thing I wanted to mention in the category dates is that we have a village election, uh, which takes place on March twenty-first. Uh, anyone who is interested in running for the two board seats that are up for grabs, I can find out more at citizenparticipation@westchesterville.com. County Board of Elections, which uh, runs our elections. Uh, and I believe there is a February fourteen filing deadline for that purpose.
Correct, just to add to that, Peter, um, I'd wanted to announce that I will also be running the village trustee position. So I know I didn't put it publicly, but I will be a candidate in that mission.
Okay, great, thank you. So the last thing I wanted to mention, uh, I'm back masked, uh, I say that because literally everybody now I know is sick. And uh, I'm uh, uh, just wanting to shout out to people uh, to be careful to get your uh, boosters and your flu vaccine if you haven't already done so. Um, available at many, many pharmacies and also available at some county clinics. You can go to the county health department site at westchester.gov.com. Uh, but we get the daily numbers uh, about COVID and uh, uh, I'm also on the community board at Phelps Hospital, uh, part of Northwell, and I get the monthly numbers about RSV and about the flu and uh, it would be good not to get sick, so. Okay, be attentive to all of that, so any other announcements to make? All right, with that, welcome, Rob Danielle, Village Pleasantville auditors report to the board. I will uh, share my screen so folks at home can follow along and you will let me know when I should advance a slide.
There we go. All right, well, good evening, excuse me, and thank you for having me present the audit results. Let's slide this over to the village Pleasantville for the fiscal year ended May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. As all, how you confirm that I've not gone kind of bitchy. Great. All right, before I begin, I just wanted to thank the village manager, Eric Morrissey, treasurer, um, Ms. Bregan, Deputy Treasurer, Ms. Shaw, and really the entire finance department. Uh, not only for their assistance throughout the audit, but really throughout the year. And we contact each other, uh, with quick questions throughout the year, so again, thank you. So I try to prepare a PowerPoint rather than go through the larger financial statements that are found, kind of condensed the important information. But as we turn to page two of the PowerPoint, we'll go through a summary overview of the audit plan, uh, our required communications, what management responsibilities are and what our responsibilities are as your external auditors. Uh, we'll spend a little time in a general fund, which is the main operating account of the village, looking at your two thousand twenty-two revenues and expenditures compared to the budget. Uh, we picked out maybe seven or eight of the major revenues, uh, seven or eight of the major expenditures and kind of we did a five-year look back to see some trends. A couple of graphs in there, five-year comparison of your uh, overall revenues and expenses, expenditures in the general fund. Another graph, the components that make up uh, the revenues and expenditures, another graph, if you will. A, a five-year look back at your fund balance. Uh, and then um, you do operate some other funds, we'll briefly talk about those and where they ended up at May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Couple of slides on your debt service requirements, your outstanding bonds, you have some short-term bond anticipation notes. And then we will conclude with some. with some summary closing. Page three. So, uh, we, we plan the audit in May. We sent a team out, uh, a few days in May to look at your internal controls. We look at your payroll, cycle, cash receipts, cash disbursements. Then we come back uh, to complete the audit, and that's done in July. Sometimes it lingers into August. Uh, we really completed the audit in September. We, because the Pleasantville community TV is a component unit of the village, uh, we are waiting on some information before we can go final with the village report, because that's included in your report as well. Uh, so our deliverables included in that, uh, spiral, uh, financial standard report is our independent auditors report on the basic financial statements. We'll talk about the opinion in a minute. You also included in your packet, uh, was our required communications to you folks, those charter governance, uh, together with their management letter. Uh, we also audit the justice court. We issued a separate audit report on that as well. Page four. Uh, just quickly, even though we do perform the audit and we prepare the financial statements, uh, management is still responsible to, uh, implement the accounting policies, to present the financial statements in accordance to the accounting standards, really to maintain internal controls throughout the year, uh, to comply with laws, regulations, and provisions of contracts, and really to provide us with the financial records so that we can complete the audit. Page five. We take that information and, and as, as a collective group, we form and express an opinion on the financial statements taken as a whole. Just the top there is, um, we try to obtain reasonable assurance that there are no misstatements. That just means we don't look at every single transaction, but we, we scope it, and if we're comfortable, we move on, um, saying that it's representative of the entire population. So as I said, we form and express an opinion on the financial statements taken as a whole. We've issued what is termed an unmodified opinion. Unmodified opinion is often referred to as a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that an entity can receive, and it basically states that the financial statements present fairly, uh, the financial position of the village at a specific point in time as of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and in accordance with the accounting standards, in accordance with the accounting generally accepted in the United States. We are required to communicate any, uh, uh, deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Uh, once again, I'm happy to report that we did not identify, uh, what we term as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. I believe we have one or two comments of a nothing rose to that level. Uh, we are required to communicate any fraud or allegations of fraud that we know during the audit. Again, there's nothing to report. No allegations or fraud were noted. Again, we encounter no difficulties in the conduct of our audit. Um, we did have a couple of entries that were proposed and were recorded by management. That just means that we didn't pass on anything, anything we found uh, we propose, and it's recorded in, in the records and your accounting system. Uh, again, finance department, very cooperative, very responsive, and we are independent with respect to the village. Page six is a high look, high-level look at your general fund. Um, as you can see, there are four columns on the page. The first column is the original budget that the village, uh, board of trustees approved sometime in the spring of two thousand twenty-one. Again, looking at the first column, uh, aggregate revenues, fifteen point seven million dollars, expenditures of fifteen point five million dollars, uh, representing an excess, if you will, of a hundred and fifteen thousand. And when you factor in what we call other financing sources and uses, which are transfers in and out between the funds, uh, you come down to a net change in fund balance of the bracket of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. There are two components to that number. The larger component, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, is what the village board approved, uh, last year from its own fund balances to balance the budget and thus provide a form of property tax relief, and a small amount, just under twenty thousand dollars, or prior year encumbrances or, or purchase orders that the village committed to. However, uh, they did not receive the goods or services, uh, so that automatically grows and amends, uh, the subsequent year's budget. The middle column is your final budget. You can see during the year, uh, the village did, uh, accept some grants and amended the budget of revenues and expenditures. Uh, and also you can see there's a, a large, uh, transfer out was amended um, about six, seven hundred thousand dollars, and that was transferred to the capital projects to continue with its, uh, you know, work that needs to be done. So now, um, you see that net change in fund balance you anticipated using five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of your own resources to balance the budget. Um, with those transfers now, you, that was bumped up to one point three million dollars. So if everything went according to plan, you would have expected to use one point three million dollars of your own resource. Third column is your actual results. You can see your actual revenues came in at seventeen point five million dollars, uh, one point six million dollars better than you anticipated. Uh, almost, uh, over ten percent, uh, compared to your budget, and we'll talk about what makes that up in a, in the next slide. Uh, you also had expenditure savings mostly in all categories, uh, to the tune of a little over nine hundred sixteen thousand dollars, just under six percent. Take your revenues, subtract your expenses, and you factor in your transfers, you come down to your net change in fund balance or, or revenues that exceeded expenditures by just under a million dollars. You're able to add that to your opening fund balance, seven point two million dollars, and you end the year at eight point two million dollars. Again, from a budgetary standpoint, that net change in fund balance, if you look across, uh, as I mentioned before, you anticipated uh, using one point three million dollars, but not only did you not need to utilize million, one point three million, one point three million dollars, you actually generated a million dollars. So from a budgetary standpoint, all the way to the right, you did two point three million dollars better, uh, than you anticipated. Page seven. So how did you get there? Again, I, I try to pull six or seven of the larger revenues. Uh, the details can be found on page fifty-seven or fifty-nine in, in the audit, uh, basic financial statements. Um, this is a look at your original budget, your final budget, and your twenty-two thousand twenty-two actual results compared to, uh, your budget as well, as well as compared to your two thousand twenty-one actuals. Uh, from a profit tax, uh, perspective, it's up about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars compared to last year, but well within the two percent, uh, proper tax cap. In fact, uh, the village has not exceeded the property tax cap in at least the past five years. Uh, the next item is the, what's called term nonprofit tax distribution from the county. Uh, that's your sales tax. You can see that sales tax is up about a hundred and forty thousand, um, compared to two thousand twenty-one. However, it's it, it performed eight hundred, over eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, better than you anticipated, and that's from a conservative budget that was bumped up from eight hundred thousand in the prior year to a million dollars. Um, so that's good news, and we still, we audit Westchester County, and we're still seeing uh, those results increasing at least for the past six months. So, uh, that's some good news for all communities.
And somewhat contrary to
You're right.
Expectations, at least when the pandemic began.
Right. Uh, parks and recreation charges. Uh, you can see that, um, if you look at twenty twenty-one, obviously, everything was shut down due to COVID. Uh, it's starting to pick up again. Uh, you can see those activities actually exceeded the budget by two, over two hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, when we look at the, the next page, we'll see some comparative numbers that the million dollars is actually climbing up to two thousand eighteen and nineteen, uh, actual figures. Uh, your parking meet permits and parking meters, same thing, up from the prior year, about a hundred thirty thousand dollars and a hundred fifty thousand dollars more than you anticipated. Again, uh, affected in two thousand twenty-one due to the pandemic, but hopefully that's back on track, uh, moving forward. Uh, same thing with your fine and forfeited bail. These are your tickets, your courts. So you can see it's actually up a little bit from two thousand twenty-one. Uh, uh, again, most of the courts were, were closed, uh, for a period of time in twenty and, and twenty-one. Uh, but hopefully that gets on, gets back on track. You can see that that fell short a little bit, uh, uh, compared to your budget by twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, mortgage tax, mortgage tax is up about, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars compared to the prior year, a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars better than we anticipated. Uh, we probably will not expect that in current year and move forward, given that the interest rates uh, continue to climb, so that may slow down. And the transfer in from the water fund, um, uh, village does budget a transfer in, um, didn't make the transfer in the past couple of years, but, um, it could certainly do so, um, based on coming the operating results of the water fund, uh, in any given. Page eight. Much slightly. Uh, again, these are the same revenue items, giving you a five-year look back, and I apologize that third column should say two thousand twenty instead of two thousand nineteen. Um, but you can see your property taxes, uh, gone up over the past five years, but well within the two percent property tax cap, uh, formula. Uh, non-property tax distribution, again, from a, a low of one point one continues to climb, um, which is great news. Uh, and had a, a great year considering the pandemic, even, even in twenty-two. Uh, parks and rec, you can see that was trending about one point one, one point two million dollars. Obviously, everything shut down to the pandemic, but as, as I mentioned before, um, generated a, a little over a million dollars and looks to be on track, uh, to what we saw in two thousand eighteen through twenty before the pandemic. Uh, parking permits and parking meters, same thing. You can see in twenty twenty, actually dropped a little bit, uh, you know, everything was closed down for two months in twenty twenty, in your, your fiscal year. Um, twenty-one, that continued into twenty-one, uh, but you can see it's starting to climb again as things open up and get back on track. Your fines and forfeited bail, um, roughly about three hundred to four hundred thousand annually. Again, due, due to the pandemic, it dropped a little bit. Uh, a lot significantly in twenty-one, uh, declined back in twenty-two, and hopefully that gets back on pace to roughly about the three hundred thousand mark in the coming year. Mortgage tax, again, that's been, uh, plus two eight. You can see a low of a hundred and nine thousand to a high of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, uh, but it's been trending upwards over the past three years, but as I said before, given the interest rate hikes, um, that may slow down. Uh, and transfers in, in the water fund, again, that's going to be based on the village's needs in any particular year, um, and over the past two years, there were no transfers made of their budget.
So what, what, do we have right to transfer from our, how much?
Yeah, it's, it's up to our discretion.
So it's, it's based on what we. But it has to be applied to water-related uses or?
No, no, it's from the water fund to the general fund. Um, we have a lot of highway personnel that does, that do water work um, and a lot of administrative support around that, but typically in the history of the village, they always budget some, most years don't use it.
Don't use that. When something is transferred into the water fund, then that does not affect the tax count, right?
Yeah, the water fund is separate. It's not subject to the tax count, correct?
This would be check. What, what didn't happen is the transfer to the general fund from the water.
Correct. This would be money coming in.
Correct, right, right. Not the reverse. And, you know, part of that issue, obviously, is the result from the water fund, whether there's fund balance available, but also, as you've already heard the moment ago from Anthony, uh, thinking about the financial status of the water fund over time, especially with the capital costs, but recognize the water fund serves a universe substantially larger than the tax base.
And the water fund does transfer money to the capital fund to do these.
Saying when, if we, um, are spending money from the general fund, that's really for water purposes, then.
We, we don't do that.
Okay.
Yeah, the general fund.
So the one did in nineteen eighteen and, or nineteen and twenty, you transferred money in from the water fund to the general fund, right?
Right, to compensate the village for the overall administrative services that it provides on behalf of the water district.
Right, and why didn't we do that then in twenty-one and twenty-two?
We didn't need to buy it. We, we budgeted a transfer in, but actually didn't need to because we were under expenses.
So the odd thing is that because the tax cap is not affected by water fund money transferring in before we violate, you know, before we exceeded the tax cap, given that we're doing real administrative work for, that affects water, we would want to use that first, right? We'd want to bring that money in with that.
I mean, it, it depends. Part of it has to do with the health of the water. It's not an indelible supply, and there were years when the water fund isn't showing that kind of a surplus. So, uh, we're not trying to rob Peter to pay Paul in a perfect world.
Uh, but if we were to take bonds for water-related projects, those don't affect our.
They're strictly in the water.
And they don't affect our, our creditworthiness in our, for the village in the same way, right?
Well, I mean, they, they look at your whole debt service profile, but, uh, you're.
All your.
Right, all your funds, but the, the paid debt, debt service on water has to come from the water fund. The general fund can lose.
So we can come back to this in more detail, feel free, but let, let Rob make her way through the rest of this, and then we can come back to any specific point.
If we turn to page nine or slide nine. Uh, again, try to pull out, uh, seven or eight to the, uh, expenditures. Uh, again, details can be found on pages sixty or sixty-two in the audited financial statements. Uh, if we start with police, you can see that police expenditures are up about half a million dollars, uh, compared to two thousand twenty-one. Uh, these relate to salary and overtime, um, due to some officers that are out of medical leave or workers comp. Um, also, the village did resume, um, its community events that requires police officers. So although the expense is up, some of it is reimbursed, uh, so some of the revenues are up as well. Transportation, transportation is pretty in line with two thousand twenty-one. This includes your street maintenance, your central garage, snow removal, and, and things like that. So one point four million dollars in twenty-two, same in twenty-one, actually under budget by about a hundred thousand dollars. Your parks and recreation programs, uh, you can see that that's up about five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That's also consistently increased in the revenues that I just mentioned before. Um, but also that, um, came in under budget about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Employee retirement and police retirement, you can see that that's up about a hundred thousand dollars, and that's based on, uh, employee salaries, police salaries, times the rates. The rates went up very slightly, uh, compared to two thousand twenty-one. But given that the stock, the, the funds are invested, uh, in New York State retirement system, are invested in the stock market, and given that the market has not done well, those rates are expected, uh, to go up. Health insurance, health insurance is up about, uh, just under two hundred thousand compared to last year, roughly about eight or nine percent. We're also told that these rates are expected to increase actually this month, in January twenty, two thousand twenty-three. Um, transfers in the debt service, these are, uh, these amounts are known. These are your outstanding principal and interest on your, on your bonds. Uh, you can see that really there's no variance, but rounding differences. That's actually down as one bond was paid off. And your transfers to the capital projects fund, again, that's going to be based on the village's needs, and as I mentioned before, you had budgeted three hundred and fifteen thousand. That was amended, um. It did some, uh, HVAC works, some oil tank removals, Clinton Street Center improvements, uh, the T P W garage, you had to replace the boiler. So you amended the budget to move those and do that work rather than bar. Uh, page, slide ten. Slide ten is just those same expenditures over the five-year trend. You can see that the police expenditures have been trending upwards, uh, over the past five years, uh, with a slight increase in salaries uh, and overtime in twenty-two. Your transportation has been pretty steady, roughly around one point four, uh, one point five million dollars over the, uh, course of five years. Uh, parks and rec was, uh, trending roughly at about two point nine million dollars, two thousand eighteen to twenty. It dropped a little bit, obviously, pandemic-related, uh, seems to be climbing again to, to reach those levels that we saw back, uh, prior to the pandemic. Uh, employee and police retirement, again, as I said, based on salaries and the rates. Uh, again, these are expected to go up, uh, but that's been trending around a million dollars, one point one, up to one point two in the current year. Uh, but it is expected to go up as well in twenty-three. Uh, and health insurance as well has, uh, been trending around two million dollars, one point nine. Uh, and that's also expected to go up slightly in twenty-three. Uh, you transfer to the debt service fund. Again, these are outstanding, uh, principal and interest under bonds. Um, really, that's just brought off as bonds been, have been paid off. And you transfer to the capital projects fund. Again, that's going to be based on the village's needs, and that can vary from year to year. Slide eleven. I just wanted to do a graph going, uh, your general fund total revenues and expenditures. You can see if we look at two thousand eighteen, uh, you had expenditures back in eighteen that exceeded revenues. Uh, the village did turn it around in two thousand nineteen, uh, have been doing quite well over the past four years. Uh, even if we look in the year of the pandemic, two thousand twenty-one, actually, um, obviously, a lot of things were shut down, but you were able to generate a surplus, and that continued. obviously, a lot of things were shut down, but you were able to generate a surplus, and that continued back to two thousand twenty-seven.
Just to remind those of you maybe listening, this is based on our fiscal year.
Correct.
June one to the end of May, sorry.
Next slide. Next slide is just a pie chart of your sources of revenues and expenses, and we look at the top three drivers on the revenue side. You can see your property taxes make up two-thirds or almost sixty-eight percent of your revenues. What we call non-property taxes, your sales tax, a little over twelve percent, and your departmental income, which includes your safety inspection fees, your parks and recreation charges, parking permits, parking meters, that's also approximately about twelve percent. Down below is the expense side. You can see that your public safety, along with your employee benefits, make up about fifty-two percent of the budget. Your culture and recreation, which is your parks, your day camps, your library, your Panther Club, that makes up about fifteen percent of the budget. And what we call general support, which are your administrative costs, and that makes up roughly about ten percent of the budget. Next slide. Page thirteen, as I mentioned, you ended the year with eight point two million dollars in fund balance. If we focus on the first column, two thousand twenty-two, and again, details can be found on page forty-eight in the financial statements. You can see from, I'm looking at the unassigned in, in green there. You can see that your unassigned fund balance has been increasing since two thousand eighteen. It's actually up about one point three million dollars compared to two thousand twenty-one. You do have eight point two in the aggregate, but some of that money is what I'll call in a couple of buckets here. Non-spendable fund balance, what that means is you have, you prepaid a bill, so that means the cash has gone out the door. You haven't recognized the, the expense. That expense will hit in two thousand, your fiscal two thousand twenty-three, and you use those resources from that non-spendable bucket so as to not affect the unassigned. You have forty-eight thousand dollars that's restricted for future capital projects. In the assigned section, you can see there are about eleven thousand dollars of opening conferences or purchases in order. Again, these will automatically roll and amend the two thousand, the May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three budget. And the village did use a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars to balance the current budget here in the two thousand twenty-three budget and provide a, a form of property tax relief. We like to compare the unassigned to the two thousand twenty-three adopted budget of a rule over seventeen point four million dollars, then you're roughly at about forty-five percent. There's no formula for where you should be with the fund balances. Community has their own needs. You do a lot of transfers to your capital projects rather than go out and borrow to do, to do that work. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you have at least two months of your annual appropriations, roughly that, they say at a minimum, it should be roughly around sixteen to seventeen percent. But again, that's just to be safe, just in case there are unexpected circumstances.
In that painful feedback we've been getting in recent years, the bond rating agencies are expecting more and more fund balance. It'd be to the extent that our bond rating could potentially be at risk if we had a fund balance percentage of general fund similar to what we had some years back.
Right.
So.
Yeah, they're, they're looking for new streams of revenue, which for a village is hard.
Right.
So secondary to that would be having support here in your fund balance for unforeseen circumstances. Next slide. As I mentioned before, you do operate other funds. You have a water fund. You can see that revenues exceeded expenditures in the water fund. So you're able to add that to, to the water fund's fund balance. That went from one point eight million to two point two million dollars. You have a debt service fund where monies are transferred there to pay for debt. There's a small amount of fund balance in the debt service fund, and that can be used to offset future debt. You have an active capital projects. Monies are generally transferred in from the general fund and the water fund to fund what we call capital outlay. You can see here that money was transferred in. Some projects didn't fully go through as of May thirty-first, so the capital projects fund does have fund balance just under nine hundred thousand dollars, but they do have a bond anticipation note, two point eight million dollars, which will ultimately be paid down or converted to permanent debt. Your refuse fund, you can see your refuse fund had expenditures that exceeded revenues. So that fund balance dipped a little bit from four hundred fifty-four thousand. It's just under three hundred thousand. And you have a special purpose fund to account for your trust. You did transfer some money for a cool reconstruction project, about a hundred ninety-four thousand of the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in expenditures. So that fund balance still remains at four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Next slide. So this slide is your outstanding bonds. You can see that the village has five point three million dollars of outstanding bonds. At the bottom, we are required to report these payments to maturity over the next five years, and then we, we group into five-year buckets for the remainder. I, I just like to look at, if you look at two thousand three through two thousand twenty-seven, your debt service requirements are roughly about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I try to break it out to the right, how that affects your, your operating fund, your general fund. So your debt service requirements, at least for two thousand twenty-three, are under three percent, which is very low for, for a village of your size. Water fund took out some larger projects. Their debt service requirements compared to their overall budget is nine point seven percent. And the refuse fund does have some outstanding debt, just under one point six percent. Next slide. As I mentioned before, you do have what we call bond anticipation notes, two point eight million dollars in May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. These were due in September, so I'm not sure if the village rolled these, but you did have favorable interest rates. I'm not so sure that they're as low going forward. But that's every community. Next slide. And I just want to close here. Again, the continuation of the village's overall good financial health can, can be credited to you folks, the leadership of the village board of management. As I mentioned before, you have remained within the two percent tax cap at least the past five years that we've kind of gone over in the PowerPoint. Even given the current economic environment, we did see some expenditure savings on the appropriations. So there's some tighter departmental controls. You can't control the revenues. You can't control the spending. But there are certain aspects of the appropriation side that you can control, and, and you have some surplus compared to budgeting the current year. And why is all that important? Having that surplus, having fund balance is going to assist you when you do your, your, your tax levy coming up for two thousand twenty-four. It's going to, if you do decide to go out to the bond market, it's going to improve your credit rating. It should lower your interest rate. I know the interest rates are high, but, but having such a good financial position adds to the factors when they calculate your interest rate. You still maintain a double A two bond rating for Moody's. And just like I said, having the fund balance enables the village to, to meet future challenges, not cut programs if it had to utilize those. So overall, considering the pandemic, the village had a period of a year. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Any questions, comments to all of that?
Sure.
Thank you so much, I'm Michael. I'm just curious, do you see other counties, do you see other municipalities of our size? All of this looks very good to me. It looks like we're in very good financial health. Are there, are there any pieces of advice you have that you see happening elsewhere, things that we could do differently that, that, that I might not be seeing?
No, I mean, we, we try to look at internal controls if there's a better way to, you know, if you, if you could piggyback off state contracts, things like that. But we look for that. I think there was some avenues we, we would report that, so. Every community is different. You have your capital needs, so every year you do utilize that. You do send money over to do these projects, so. As the mayor mentioned before, you know, I'm going back maybe ten years, you know, you weren't in such a great position. So you kind of don't want to utilize that to end up.
Disagreeing with that.
We got rid of him on the board. He's saying that we're looking up everything.
Yeah, I'd say, Robert, your history is a little.
Maybe, but maybe not ten years. He's right.
I am right.
I didn't mean that. So, yeah, I mean, like I said, every community is different, so I think you're on the right path and you know, you, you did have a conservative budget. You, you increased some revenue estimates, and they just came in much better than anticipated.
And you, I mean, the whole sales tax thing is kind of interesting. Am I correct in believing that New York City's sales tax remains well below its pre-pandemic world?
I'm not sure about that, but if you remember back in nineteen, Westchester raised its sales.
Right, and Henderson gave municipalities a piece of it.
Right, and there's still, you know, the reports we get from Westchester, it's, it's unusual, but it's still showing a lot of spending and it's continuing to claw you.
Yeah, of course, you've got some people spending more time at home and in their home communities and not commuting elsewhere to work.
Probably, and I think, you know, the internet sales factor in, so there's some other avenues that weren't looked at before.
And I, I might add, we have our complaints about higher levels of government, but Westchester is, is one of the counties that does share a piece of sales tax with municipalities, and, and many counties in New York do not.
Correct.
So, thank you, Wes, for your comment.
Can I ask just one quick question?
Sure.
Follow up on Michael's question. Your slide twelve. Expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Is there anything on that slide that the motive Michael asks, looks out of line, both positive or negative relative to other communities that suggest any areas of of action for the village or areas that we can be applied for?
No, I mean, it's, you know, your public safety and communities, your police and fire, or your, your, your higher expenditures. You can't control the employee benefits. It's all contractual. If there's ways to cut those. I know your, 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 your police contract is being negotiated. So they, they pretty much look in line with other villages, so. You know, your culture and rep programs are a little higher maybe, but those are kind of interrelated with the revenue side, so.
And then just for clarity, you know, this is the snapshot as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Since then, we paid down the ban on the DPW truck and sanitation truck. So we use that debt service fund balance and through that the bans. We've transferred money out of fund balance for the Nahtigan Brook project. We have that wall that we need to reconstruct, that seven hundred thousand, so when it's all said and done, we're probably going to be in the thirty to thirty-five percent fund balance range rolling into the new fiscal year.
Which in a little bit of a previous generation would have felt fine, and, and in today's world, especially with the advice we get from bond rating agencies, it has to be explained.
Yeah, thirty-five percent has to be explained.
Yeah.
So you have this interesting dynamic where the controller's office will be critical of a high fund balance, whereas the credit rating agencies want to see more of it.
But I might also add to that, that what we're seeing here is the result of, of of, of a decision quite some years ago to try to move towards funding some capital expenses with cash.
Without borrowing.
Correct.
And I'll, I'll also add that you're doing some of these capital projects, and then you are applying for grants or things like that and getting reimbursed down the road. So you're laying out the cash, and then you're finding avenues to kind of replenish some of those projects. Marine could vouch for that, so you might lay the cash out and might get a reimbursement in a subsequent year. So you're doing whatever you need to do to kind of offset those costs.
Which is exactly the right thing to do, and the painful part of it is that the sort of fifty thousand point view, it screws up the appearance of the year-to-year comparison.
Yes, because it crosses.
So there are years when you have these high expenses without the grant reimbursement, like what the hell happened?
And then vice versa.
A following year when you have these high revenues without the expenses and like, what do you, you know?
Well, but when you get a grant reimbursement, shouldn't it accrue to the year that the expense occurred?
You should. If you expect, if you expect to get that within the next twelve months, then we would pick up a receipt, yes.
Okay.
But we look for those, so we do a lot of subsequent years testing.
Well, because we'll get one for the Mandel Road safety.
Yeah, yeah, and the parking, the electric vehicle charging in the station are not in here either. With a big reimbursement, yeah, big hit.
It's way easier just to, to spend and receive in the same year at the moment.
Yes. We used to be known as the matching principle.
All right, Rob, any comments of any sort from the public? I don't see anyone on Zoom raising a hand. Very much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the next year.
All right, any comments from the public on any subject? Enter and sign in, please.
Jonathan Cunningham, fourteen, Title A Lane. I am here because on your agenda item, you might guess, you have a certiori that you're going to be discussing. I don't come to all the times that you talk about certioris, but every so often I come to find out what the current thought process is. This one's particularly large. Resulting in more than a hundred thousand dollars, it looks like, of tax refund if you approve it to go to the to the, what is it, the the entity looking for the certiori and last time I was here, we had discussed this, the idea of getting together with the the town. I was curious as to, have we ever had that discussion about challenging any of these certioris? Just for purposes of clarification, they are currently assessed on the larger end of eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, eight hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. The revised assessment's three hundred thousand dollars, so you're cutting their assessment sixty percent. No homeowner that I'm aware of, residential homeowner that I'm aware, has ever received a, a discount cut like that ever. And, and I, I find it galling. I know legally they're allowed to do it. But we've never challenged them. And this is a hundred thousand dollars. It's going to go from, just to be clear to everybody, from, and it's not just these guys, it's almost all commercial properties, from the commercial tax base to the residential tax base. You guys aren't raising taxes or lowering taxes as a result of this. It's just a direct wealth transfer from the commercial property tax base to the residential tax base. With, with, with some smoothing effects, I understand, but ultimately, if all commercial properties do this, the residential homeowner is the ones that bear the, the, this, this, this transfer. And I think that, one, having come from a school of, of efficient markets, there is, there is no way that what's going on in this process is efficient. The, you know, I'm not going to say, I haven't seen, and I would like to see, the the, the certiori, the calculations that they, they they have put forward, forward, my guess is they use the incomes, the income process. Are you guys, are you guys well versed on how this works, how the income process works?
So, John.
I know you are, Peter, but are the rest of us?
I'm fairly well versed in it. Let me just say one thing, that, that the matter you are commenting about is our resolution number two of the year twenty twenty-three. And it refers to the former Bank of New York parcels.
Correct.
That are up behind Foxwill.
Yep.
And, and obviously, you're, you're not privy to advice or counsel, but we, I, I think it is fair to say we are in a circumstance where it is very hard to dispute a property that was marketed and sold at a price far below its assessment.
Okay.
Because that creates a market. That, that, that is, that is a, a rather different story than a property that either remains in its current ownership or is transacted at, at what we would all believe to be a market rate similar to the assessment, and then raise their taxes based on the income net.
Right, but, but let me, let me. Right, but but let me, let me ask you a question, if I sell my house well below uh what I think it's worth or what it's assessed for, um, the current owner, uh, do they have, does, does?
So, I mean.
And I've sat through these meetings, uh, on February whatever, uh grievance night. Uh, that doesn't necessarily create a reference point for which they can grieve their taxes.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. It it it's based on comparables.
But if you sold your your property for substantially less than its market value, then the question is, okay, why did you do that, right? So you could be in a circumstance where, for example, someone decides to sell their property to their cousin or their child or whatever, uh, and is seeking to be generous and just for the sake of argument, sells a eight hundred thousand dollar house for four hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
That doesn't mean the house is only worth four hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Then the question is, okay, well, what would be the market value uh that would arise from an arms-length transaction uh without a special uh uh influence of 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 some sort? And it would be fair to say that when the Bank of New York property was put on the market uh through a third-party broker and advertised publicly and ultimately sold that, to our knowledge, that's an arms-length transaction. Right, so interesting circumstance, as you well know about that property. Uh, if you had a hundred forty thousand square foot building in some other location, it would likely have been of far greater interest to commercial users looking for that kind of space.
Hmm.
A hundred and forty thousand square foot building in that location with some of the encumbrances that exist from the zoning standpoint, from the uh property uh rights standpoint, from the standpoint of easements that exist, uh means that that property uh turned out to sell for quite a bit less than it had been assessed for. And that's obviously it it is a unique property in that it arose as a little bit of an accident of history. I won't bore you with the details, some of which you probably know, I'd be happy at some time to to go through it, but uh, we're not in a circumstance here where uh, uh, we've rolled over and played dead, there is no doubt that there's a very significant refund here and will be a very significant refund as well, has already been one on the school side. Um, uh, and on the county and town side, so uh, what's the reality? If you sell your house for dramatically less than we imagine it's worth, we'll put up a fuss and say, well, hold it, you know, what's going on there? Why is it worth so much less than we would imagine that to be the case? When we have an arms-length transaction through a publicly advertised free market, kind of a different story.
Okay, I mean, I I I would say that, I would say that my reaction to that is, um, uh, that the uh the idea of um uh reassessing this based on uh on a a market sale is just one that I I I I, maybe it is available, but I did not feel it was readily available to the regular homeowner in the state of New York.
Uh, so, so I I can speak to that, when we bought our house, the uh tax that was paid by the previous homeowner was about four or five thousand dollars above what was implied by our transaction, we had no relationship to the person that we bought it from, um, we sought counsel, we talked to the uh village assessor and he changed, we didn't have to agree that, he changed it based on the open market transaction, okay?
So, I mean, as you well know, um, I I think it's probably fair to say that by and large uh the imputed market values that arise from our residential assessments uh tend to be similar to or below what the actual house value is, uh that comes from several different things, including the era when uh a village-wide revolve is done, but also the fact that the uh formulas that are used to arrive at the current market value are a trailing formula from previous years. And so there's a delay as well, so, for example, in the past year, we've seen this very, very high spike in uh people's uh house sales with at one point seventy some odd percent of closings that took place, residential closings, going above the asking price.
Right.
So, so uh none of that has anything to do with our assessments, which is to say, we're not going back and nor do we have the right to go back and say, well, your house sold for more, we're going to raise your tax assessment.
Right.
That can't be done on a one-z, two-z basis.
Right.
But as you well know, any individual homeowner who feels they are unfairly assessed
Right, but I thought that that process, and and every, every instance I've been involved in that process, and and this is something new and I'm I I think David, David's uh um uh recounting of his experience is something that I I have not heard happen, I was always under the impression that in order to get a uh a grievance and a lowering of your taxes, one, it had to come before the board to be approved, and two, uh, and I, so I don't know how you did that, but I thought that the board had to approve a lowering, and two, I thought it had to be done with a with a backup of comparables and uh, and and other things in order for us to feel, or you guys, uh, to feel comfortable to lower the taxes, so.
It's a fairly rare occurrence uh in in this village with our current tax assessment rules. It's a relatively rare occurrence for somebody's residential assessment to be um more than its market value, which isn't to say it doesn't happen, clearly, it it did happen in David's case. By and large, the argument that you've presented in your years as a trustee is that people are over-assessed, uh even if their assessment appears to be uh commensurate with what even the homeowner agrees to be market value, they can make an argument, as is reasonable to do, and say, well, I'm looking at this other universe of well, properties that that I believe are similar to mine, so uh that's not the simplest case to make, and you don't have the right to just cherry pick to find the, you know, the small number of properties that might work, but I I, you and I, as you know, have talked about this many, many times over, over, you know, a decade and a half here, that isn't what's going on with this one. Uh, but but I will also say uh that this matter makes clear what we've already said, um, which is the the revival of that property for some productive use is important to us all. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax dollars to to top village, town, school, county. Um, and uh, you know, it's an interesting conversation, which I've had with a bunch of folks and which will continue to have. Uh, it's it's not in the A one district and and therefore isn't part of this moratorium.
Correct.
Uh, but it it does go to the question that also exists elsewhere, which is um, what is it that uh feels like the right thing for the community at a given time? Because.
Again, this just, this just reinforces the absurdity of the law, I guess, i- i- and and in my opinion. Here, here they're able to, uh, I mean, the the commercial homeowner, the commercial property owners, are you they let their property run down or they find that it's no longer the use that they thought it would be, and so they're able to, so the market value, they're able to lower it based on market value and or and they're able to lower it based on income, and it's just, it is, meanwhile, regular homeowners with the rare, rare exception of David, you know, has got the, has got the, you know, nothing but the, you know, nothing but the market value to rely on.
So I I I get that.
And and Michael too, I don't know, but.
I get it. It just depends when you moved here, I guess.
I get that, I I get, I I, believe me, I I've got plenty of frustrations with with the way this had been worse as well. But I I will say, just just to be clear about this situation, uh, you know, we had a circumstance where a a very big and very well-maintained, very strange property exists in the village of Pleasantville, where there was a hundred and forty thousand square foot building with like two, two people working in it for the last twenty years.
Great job.
And as it turns out to that owner, uh, and for that use, it was worth quite a bit of money.
Okay.
But but now we're in a circumstance uh where that user decided the world has changed, they they don't need a big elaborate backup facility, and they put it on the market, and it turns out, nobody else does either, at least so far, so I mean, it really is a a very significant change in the in the foundational value of that property. So, and and I can tell you, as you likely already know, among the possible uses for that property uh are are uses that might justify a far higher purchase price for a potential land buyer.
Yeah.
Um, stay tuned, right?
Uh, yes, stay tuned, I, so I will, uh, I will, uh, keep my eye out for the next certiori that is doesn't have the unique characteristic of One Campus Drive or whatever this was, um. Uh, but uh, and and I urge you to the degree that you see them and have an opportunity to speak with the town about challenging some of these, because as rates go up, um, you're going to, I think, it provides the the commercial uh base an opportunity to once again uh really take a look at that, that income approach and create situations where, once again, certioris become, you know, ever-increasing once again.
Yeah, so, look, I mean, I I'd say the, obviously, there's a steady flow of commercial certioris, certioris, uh, uh, but uh annually uh, we get vastly more residential ones than we do commercial properties, there are vastly more residential properties.
Yeah, but they're not on the same scale.
Yeah.
And or anywhere near the same discount that the commercial properties get.
So, well, you and I, fifteen years ago, collared the judge at 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 in the Brooklyn Court at that dinner, uh, um, and annually, the Municipal Officials Association for Westchester uh has a list of priorities and these matters are one of them. Um, I can say that, uh, well, I've gone too far with it, in part because it's it's uh not been a priority on either side of the aisle in in the state. You know, partly, I think there's obviously some political turmoil attached to that, and partly because I I'm not sure that the, despite our bringing it up annually, uh, that uh the average elected official in the Senate of Legislature is really uh all that uh familiar with the absolute nuts and bolts of it, and I will say in a shout out.
And I would, I would agree with that, and I would say that's a shame, because that is
It is a shame.
The 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 greatest amount of 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 tax transfer, I mean, our our taxes go up way more than whatever it is that you guys pass, less than the two percent, because of tax certioris, I mean, that's just the reality.
Yeah, I mean, we, it 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 hasn't been too bad in recent years, but
Well, the lower rates have created a.
In a shout out uh to just now retired uh Assemblywoman Sammy Gayle.
Yeah.
She, uh, of all of the people in legislature that that I'm aware of, uh, took a leadership initiative for a long period of time in trying to grapple with some of these issues and made some progress here and there. Uh, and uh her her spot has has been taken by Dana Levinberg, previously the supervisor in the town of Osmead, and uh I I already commented Dana that uh she needs to uh grab that flight and keep carrying it, so.
You should, um, when you get the chance, read the letter that we received from the county on the proposed moratorium. I haven't seen it, um, it's in, we're, we're, it's public record, right?
Yeah.
It'll, it'll be in the agenda pack when we have a public hearing, um. I think it's fair to say that it's a shot across the bow. Not not a shot into the sides of the ship, but a shot across the bow.
The county's weighed in on our proposed moratorium?
They're required to, we are required to send a referral to the county and also to our own planning division. So, I mean, the issue there is that the county planning department, uh, and and clearly uh Albany as well are very much focused on uh uh expanding housing in general, and certainly expanding affordable housing, but expanding housing in general.
Yeah.
It's going to be interesting to see, I think, um, if you uh have uh time to kill uh tomorrow, um, at one P M, Governor Hochul is going to be delivering her State of the State address, uh, which will set the tone, I imagine, for the state budget, which will re-release, I think, within a week or two thereafter.
Mm-hmm.
And um, if passes prologue, uh, there are going to be some uh housing and affordable housing-related uh priorities in her State of the State address, and almost certainly some housing and affordable housing-related uh uh pieces in her budget, uh, some of which uh may engage uh the munition of home rule, so we're very much focused on that, I'm the legislative chair for the Municipal Officials Association of Westchester, as I have been for a few years, we're going to Albany, uh, second week of of um February, uh, and uh obviously, we'll report to all about what we see in the, in the budget, but um.
I mean, I'll ta- I'll take a look at it, I I I, you know, uh, when I look at at the at the letter, it'd be interesting to see what this is.
Is it okay to email them?
Sure, that's unrelated to this.
No, no, I I it is, it it, the only thing, the only thing I'll say is that, you know, again, um, uh, should, yeah. Like lawyers, you don't like to make statements that you don't know the answer to, so I'll be careful about what I say, but um, uh, the uh potential increase in the population of the village of Pleasantville, I'm not sure, over the next couple of years, just due to the current development that's happening within uh two square blocks of the train station is replicated in many other communities around the bill, around Westchester County, so.
Certainly, it's replicated in some, but that is uh very much related to the argument that I and others made last year.
Yeah.
Um.
So, so, so the governor can do what she wants with home rule and whatever else, I I in in a way, I'm not all that concerned about it, it's like, well, let's go to court on that, if you if you feel like you need to.
I don't, I don't care your lack of concern about it, I can tell you that.
Well, yeah.
Um, here's what I will say.
If we're under gun sights, uh.
It's not us, it's not us, it's the problem, which is demonstrable and quantifiable and clear. Uh, you know, and honestly, I I don't say this with any suggestion of what it means in terms of what we ought to do next, but as as is is it apparent with crystal and clarity, uh, we're in an environment, certainly have been in 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 the recent past, where I don't know where regular people are going to live. Right? I mean, what, five years ago, the million-dollar transaction for residential property was unusual, it is now routine. So, um, uh.
Yeah, but and and I don't disagree with you, and 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 this is a much bigger conversation than I want to get into tonight, I I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, but, you know, the 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 so-called rents that we're being told that are going to be charged, it's only I don't know how regular people pay those rents, honestly, I don't know how people pay the rents at the loss, for example, whatever, so it it's like, well, I I, you know, uh, who's solving what problem here, I mean?
And 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 that's a a a a point that, believe me, we have made in Albany as well, I will say, uh, on behalf of Pleasantville and many Westchester municipalities, we have a ten percent set aside for affordable, even the affordable level at eighty percent of the average median income
Right.
as set by HUD is is.
Nearly a hundred thousand dollars.
By no means, uh, uh, well, it depends on the size of the unit, that would be for a family.
No, but but isn't the income level, though, like ninety thousand dollars?
Oh, it's, it's a sliding scale depending on the household.
Okay.
So, uh, but again, you know, same story, these are, uh, these are, are forces going on around us that are are outside of our individual control, and I share your view that Pleasantville has done its part.
More than it's done.
And that's it, uh, you know, there are lots of other factors in play, and that's obviously what we'll talk about in the course of the discussion with uh with what I assume to be the moratorium that will pass on the twenty third, so.
Okay.
All right?
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you, and by the way, the um, David, I I appreciated your question about the uh water fund. Um, and uh unless it's changed, um, though, and I heard the water fund balance act, fund balance actually grew.
Yeah.
So it those those dollars, unless it's changed in, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are generally fungible at least one direction from the water fund to the general budget.
They totally are. I'm just saying, like, before we break the tax gap, we should probably be reimbursing ourselves for, you know, the actual amount of administrative work that we spend against water-related issues.
Well, there's already a piece charged into that, but again, I mean, there, there, well, there's also a piece built into the general budget, but let me just say, one of the things on the radar here is of the replacement of the two, which is many millions of dollars.
Yep.
And so, um, you know, obviously, the water system serves nine thousand and some people uh, as opposed to fifty or seventy-five hundred, uh, that that are village residents, but, uh, there are a whole bunch of factors that are likely to affect water, uh, even separate from those capital expenses, including the cost of raw water being, uh, jumped up by New York City, including the spiking cost of electricity required to treat the water. All these factors would suggest, you know, what we're trying to do is is, uh, uh, maintain some balance here when we know there are some storm clouds in the water.
Right, yeah, but if we're charging seventy-five hundred people for administrative expenses that are really should be borne by nine thousand people, then that's not right.
But we do have administrators sent, uh, uh, the services built into the regular budget.
Yeah.
We do. A lot of times what happens, it hasn't happened in a few years, but my first year, you've definitely did that great job on the water main replacements. Water infrastructure work ripples into opportunities for highway improvements. So, that we do take a look and is there an opportunity or should we use it this past two years because of COVID? Not much has gone on. We left it in water. Because once again, water may have an unexpected expense, but sometimes it's just as hand in hand, and it's the same team here at the village.
Yeah. And and to the to the rate audit or water audit, what's important to do with the other layer is that the Millwood Water Treatment Plant now has major capital improvement items.
Yeah.
They need a new roof.
Well, it's now like thirty years old.
Yeah, so, and we have, we're obligated to pay, uh, a proportion of that on our ownership statement. So, we're trying to pay that in cash instead of having to borrow.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, on behalf of all our workers, including the whatever it is, uh, fifteen hundred or two thousand people who are outside the village. They're all our people, and we're trying to keep everything.
No, it is, but I'm just saying, like, if seventy-five hundred people are paying village taxes, then none of their taxes should have an undue benefit to the other fifteen hundred people who are not.
And I don't think ultimately they do.
Yeah, and that's why the water fund is separate. You know, water expenses live in the water fund. Right, but we pay something from cash from the general fund that is for water, right?
No.
We're not doing that?
No.
I will, if I find it, I I I came across this as a very fascinating twelve-minute, ten-minute YouTube video about the history of the New York water system.
Not really.
It's fascinating. About where it originates in the hundred-and-nineteen mile line. It's crazy.
Well, and I mean, you're talking about a nineteenth-century system that is still the the envy of the world serving America.
It would never get built today, probably.
Oh, my God. And 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 it, the city is fantastically larger than it was.
It's unbelievable.
Right.
It's it's, okay, guys, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Take care.
Um, I just wanted to mention that Abby Luby posted a question. Uh, has One Campus Drive been sold? And are there tax certs for the other three properties that are part of the same sale?
So, One Campus Drive has not been sold. Uh, uh, that is, it was sold by the Bank of New York. The cert is is filed by the owner who purchased those parcel from the Bank of New York. There are several different parcels in the cert. Uh, but that's simply, I think, because there are several parcels on the side. It was a tax parcel.
Yeah.
So, no, if if we're not aware of it having been sold. All right. With that, we'll go to the resolutions. As I should have mentioned at the outset, uh, four of us are here in person. Uh, Nicole Esquith is, uh, computer telephonically uh, and is entitled to vote as we have a quorum of physical bodies here ready. All right. Through the resolutions, number one.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the budget amendment for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two as listed below. Thirty thousand of A nine-nine-one-zero-point-four-zero-zero contingent to account A Form Core zero-point-four-zero-zero engineering. Increased revenue and expenses, general fund closeout, D F C grant year seven, September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, amount of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ten and forty-seven cents for revenue account A, Form Four-point-four-four-one dash D F C, people strong drug-free community revenue. Uh, the amount is dispersed, um, to the expenditure account, five thousand sixty-one and fifty-one cents to the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Conferences, two thousand twelve and sixty-one cents for Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Supplies, three thousand three hundred and one and thirty-five cents for Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Miscellaneous, twenty thousand and thirty-five for the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community O S expense. Increased revenue and expenses, general fund open D F C grant year eight, nine, thirty, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Revenue to the expenditure accounts, broken down in the following way. Eleven thousand six hundred and thirty for the Drug-Free Community Conferences for people strong, uh, nine thousand eight hundred and thirty for the people strong Drug-Free Community Supplies, three thousand nine hundred for the people strong Drug-Free Community Miscellaneous, ninety-nine thousand six hundred and forty for the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community O S expense.
Is there a second? Sorry, but just reminding folks that, uh, we are the fiscal agent for the Community Strong, uh, project, but that is not a tax-funded enterprise. It is funded by, uh, federal grant. Uh, I think, uh, there was a five-year cycle that has been renewed, and if I'm correct, we're in year three of the second five-year cycle.
Yes.
Um, comments, questions?
And just for note, uh, that other thirty thousand contingent to, uh, engineering, that's for the V F J uh, services for the moratorium analysis.
Okay. All in favor?
I I motion approve.
Nicole, number two.
Okay. Um, whereas by resolution number, um, two zero two-two dash two-nine-one adopted on September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, the Village Board of Trustees authorized the settlement of tax Sertiory proceedings entitled matter of One Campus Drive Associates LLC versus uh, the assessor of the Village of Pleasantville, it all uh, Superior Court, Westchester, co-index numbers um, five-four-eight-three-four dash twenty-one and five-nine-two-five-nine dash twenty-two. And whereas these proceedings contested the Village of Pleasantville twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two assessments of three tax parcels identified as section ninety-nine-point-one-five block one, lot three, section ninety-nine-point-one-five block one, lot four, section one oh-six-point-five and section ninety-nine-point-fourteen block one, lot seventy-seven on the Village of Pleasantville ta-tax map referred to as subject parcels. And whereas at the time, resolution number twenty-two-two-nine-one was adopted, the Village Board of Trustees anticipated the consent judgment effectuating those settlement terms would be entered by the Supreme Court, Westchester County, and served with notice of entry and application of refund upon the village prior to the processing and payment of the second half of tax year twenty-twenty-three taxes levied upon the subject parcels. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees thus anticipated the suspension of payment for the second installment of tax year twenty-twenty-three, however, full payment of the second installment of these tax taxes for the subject parcels was received by the time a notice of entry with the entered consent judgment and application of refund dated December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three was received via the U S Postal Service by the village on December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And whereas, as a result, the total of Village of Pleasantville tax refunds due under the settlement and the terms of the consent judgment equal one hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred ten and sixty-four of a hundred uh, dollars, and now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees confirms that the settlement of these proceedings requires the following adjustments to the Village of Pleasantville assessments of the subject parcels for assessment years two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two with the accompanying refunds. So, for the tax parcel, ninety-nine point, uh, fifteen.
Further stated in the record.
Okay, as further stated in in the record, be it further resolved that the village administration is authorized to take the steps necessary to abide by these terms, including the payment of the refunds specified in this resolution.
Is there a second? Second, so, this is it, if you, in essence, right?
It's timing, just to be transparent in the payments you're seeing, I asked for this resolution. Because otherwise, we were gonna pay them eighty-seven thousand.
Right.
They weren't gonna pay us. They paid us.
Right.
Because of the tempo of the court, but we had agreed, it's okay, don't pay. And they paid us, so now we're actually.
The the board had approved, authorized this a few months ago. The deal was, don't pay, nerd, next property tax installment. They did. And then.
The assessments are the same numbers, that original chart from September twenty-ninth.
So, I mean, that complaint Jonathan's making is is not timely.
No, the original assessment reduction was approved back in September.
Yeah, all right, comments, questions? All in favor?
I I motion approve, David number.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the app track for payment of claims dated January ninth, twenty-twenty-three for fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-three. Covering check numbers one oh-six oh-three-six to one oh-six-one-six four from the general fund, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents from special purposes, twenty-nine ninety-seven dollars from the waterfront, hundred and thirty-seven thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty-five cents with capital fund, two hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents from the refuse fund, one thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-one cents for a total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-six and seventy-six cents uh, payment of claims attached.
Is there a second? Second. Big number because of that fourth-line capital fund.
That's right. That's our first, um, check of the contractor. We're gonna turn around and submit that to New York State D O T for reimbursement.
Or contractor for the Mandovera.
Correct.
Yeah. All right, comments, questions? All in favor?
I I motion.
Michael, number four.
Whereas the Village Board of Trustees has proposed introductory local law one of twenty-twenty-three to amend chapter one seventy-three, article seven, section sixty of the Code of Village of Pleasantville entitled schedule well, parking prohibited at all times. To prohibit parking on the west side of Washington Avenue from Hildreth Place south for thirty feet and from Hildreth Place north for thirty-eight feet. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville authorizes the hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three at eight o'clock P M to be held in Village Hall, eighty Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York. Your comments concerning introductory local law one to prohibit parking at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Hildreth Place.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh.
Appreciate the hearing.
Well, no, we're the tax cap override we're gonna do on February thirteenth. The meeting.
I would assume that this public hearing is not likely to generate
Exactly.
Too much commentary.
Yeah.
Uh, this arose from a review, uh, Anthony Carr, D B G, who was then an engineer mate, uh, based on concerns of neighbors about his ability pulling out of uh, Hildreth, and, uh, he had provided a detailed memo and it uh, seemed logical. All in favor?
I.
I. Been approved. Back to you, Paul, number five.
Whereas the state legislator and the governor and the act of legislation establishes a property tax cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase each year. And where under this law, the total amount to be raised for property taxes charged in municipalities taxable assessed value of property will be capped at two percent of the rate of inflation, whichever is less with some exceptions. And whereas the state legislation provides the local governments override the cap end. Whereas the state legislation requires that in the event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees prior to the adoption of the fiscal year budget. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Village Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at eight P M. Just carry that one zero to the L at the Village Hall, eighty Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York. Um, here comments on introductory law two of two thousand twenty-three overriding the property tax cap of the Village fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and to through two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, uh, as is the case, uh, for some years running, uh, it is our policy to pass the enabling legislation to allow us to override the tax cap if necessary. Uh, nobody should take this to, uh, mean that we have decided to do so. Simply putting the paperwork in place as we begin the budget process for the budget that would begin with our new fiscal year in June one. Uh, so again, it's simply to have the paperwork in place, uh, in the event it shouldn't be. Comments, questions? All in favor?
I.
I motion approve, Nicole, number six.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two and special meeting held on December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. And the minutes are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
I I motion approve.
David number seven.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville issued a public bid for one-year contract for sidewalk and curb improvements and whereas the following bids were received on December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two reviewed by Anthony Carr, superintendent of Public Works village engineer. Uh, following bid, do I need to read read all of them?
I think so.
Okay. From cornerstone cornerstone restoration group for uh, bid estimate one hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred Vernon Hills Contracting, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, Moreno Brothers Corp, two hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Westchester Hills Landscaping Incorporated, one hundred and seventy thousand ninety-two dollars. Palladino Concrete Creations Corp, two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Contact Construction Act, one hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Peter Landy Inc., one hundred and twenty thousand three hundred dollars. C M C Contractors, Inc., eighty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Woodland Manor LLC, one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby awards bid twenty-twenty-two dash six for the sidewalk and curb improvements in the amount of eighty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars to C M C Contractors, Inc., Greenwich, Connecticut through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Uh, Anthony Carr, superintendent, has reviewed the bids, reviewed the uh, references for, uh, the low bidder and recommends that we accept it.
So he feels like do you see this very often, like, three times between the low bid and the high bid?
Um, so there was one, uh, one price where they were very low and Anthony did the due diligence on it and feels comfortable awarding. Um, but yeah, I mean, certainly that was eye-popping. Uh, it does happen. It's happened a lot, not really. Uh, we think part of the equation is that they are trying to probably get a foothold in this region of Connecticut. Sure, they haven't done a lot of work here, and so it's a one-year contract, so potentially that's a you know, a business opportunity for them.
Okay.
But yeah, we we thought the same thing, and, uh, it all checks out.
All right, all in favor?
I I motion approve.
Michael, number eight.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to advertise for bid twenty-twenty-three dash one for bus services for summer and teen travel kit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very straightforward, all in favor?
I I approve.
Number nine, back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Rosalie Martin, part-time recreation assistant, job class code zero-two-six-nine, the hourly rate of twenty dollars, effective January thirty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
There a second?
Second.
Rosalie, all in favor?
I.
I. Um, just a a quick recap, we we, uh, had a report from Mike Newman, our superintendent of recreation and work session about Panther Club, and they have been able to expand Panther Club to accept an additional twenty-five kids. Uh, and then, uh, about, uh, twenty-five kids who are on the waiting list did not choose to take advantage of the opportunity to, uh, stay on that waiting list because, I guess, they found public uh, services, so, um, the waiting list is now, uh, in the thirties, um, but, uh, the Uros Direct Department, uh, and to the school district for cooperating in efforts that uh, provide the service to it, many kids and families are waiting. All right, that's the last of our, uh, resolutions. Any new business? Any comments of any kind from members of the public? I see no hands raised on Zoom. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I approve.
Uh, thank you all again. Happy New Year, uh, wishing for a great year for all of us. Uh, we will see you in two weeks on the twenty-third and be reminded that of that evening, uh, includes the public hearing to enact a more authoritative development in the A one district. Thank you all. See you in two weeks.